Need you to be bombing at eight o'clock. We're gonna call the meeting of order. We'll call for a moment of silent prayer. Amen. We'll do the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag, United States of America, to the public, for which it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a regular session meeting, January the tenth, two thousand twenty-one. On the agenda, we're gonna swap from the new business down after the top. I've got Department of Chairman, Vice Chairman, Positions and Committees. And one thing we need to add to the agenda is talk about adding the GPS on county vehicles. Is there anything else need to add to the agenda? Need a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
I second.
All in favor? Motion's carried. Approval of the minutes. Anything like it was out of order now or need correcting? If not, need a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
I second.
All in favor? Motion's carried. Accounts payable on the financials. Any questions on that? Need a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried. The financial reports. Anything on that? Any questions? Not need a motion to approve.
I make motion to approve.
I second.
All in favor? Motion's carried. All right, the new business is Department of Chairman, Vice Chairman, Positions and Committees.
Can we just leave it like it is? I make a motion. Yeah. I make a motion to leave it like it is.
Is there a second?
I second.
All in favor?
I'm against.
Well, if it takes my vote to do it, I'll accept the position. If laid, I'll accept the Vice Chairman position.
I'll accept.
Motion's carried. The appearances, got Jerry Calhoun for the redistricting. Jerry, you wanna go over this with us?
Yes, sir. You know, I must say, see, when I live.
That's fine.
As you know, you just had a census completed. Dropped a few people, full of damage, and sixty-one from five to six thousand. What the law says we need to do as far as our voting districts is having one. At each one, you got six thousand divided by five offices, and you put one in every district. Been in communication with Mr. Duke. His office is very helpful. They gave us a letter to talk to the office that does these maps. And young lady sent me a proposal, which I hope that you have in mind. As you can see, there's not very many changes.
The, you got the maps. One of them's got new on there, and then there's actually two other ones.
Yeah, one of them is city, one of the county overall. Really kinda hard to see them, they're that small. You know, I can tell you what the changes are. In town, it's basically moved the line for District Four from West Gear Street down North Cuthbert, North First Street. Then there's one little block that goes from East Pine, which is the delineator between four and one, to Reed Street, which is, you know, like one block. District Two, if you'll see, on the Lunsford Road, you know where that is. It's due down to Draker Jones, and then Mother Tom's Church. That going from three to two. So the line now will be Brentson Road. And then District Three, the line for District Four used to come out all the way to Grimsley Bridge Road. They're taking that back, giving it back to District Three. It actually now comes up to the pileup line right behind where the firehouse is.
What?
District Five, there was no change.
You got District Four giving up part of it inside the city and gaining that.
Yeah, you know, they did that by census blocks, so it depends on how many people lives wherever. The numbers that's, yeah, broken down, you know, everybody's got twelve hundred under this proposal. Except maybe District Three might be eleven ninety or something. It's very close. And, you know, it'll never always be decided, so people move in, move out, take your pass away, and.
Nikki, you looked it over?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at now.
We got to, uh.
We just need to approve it?
We got to approve this.
Yeah, I've got a hard deadline. It's got to be completed by February thirteenth. I don't know when y'all will meet again, but that would be too late. I have to do all the work, I got input, all the data.
Everything looks good to you? Everything looks?
Oh, I'm happy. I had to talk to that. The last one was not that easy.
Allen's district has changed the most, looks like to me.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Land area, but, you know, people wise, it's probably just.
Mine didn't change, so I'm okay with it.
We'll do the motion. I make motion to approve it.
Second.
Nikki, is any acceptable with you? All right, got a motion, a second, all in favor? All right, motion's carried. So is there anything else we need to do on this, other than approve this? Uh, appreciate you coming. Uh, the next on the appearance, we've got Steve Houston, Grimsley Bridge Road. Yeah?
I've got some pictures of this water running out of that field. I come up there last year, out John Brantley, digging this ditch. Well, it come to my attention later on, he had dug that ditch before and had to cover it up. And, uh, and what he's doing is very much in violation of federal law. He, he's destroyed the habitat for these old ugly birds, whooping cranes. And nobody seems to wanna do nothing till y'all turn it over to the woman up by, uh, Debbie Henry.
NRCS.
Sir?
The NRCS office. Debbie Henry, the NRCS office.
Well, I don't understand. He dug that ditch before, and he had to cover it up. The county made him cover it up. Then, yes, sir.
Well, I don't think it was none of us made him cover it up. I said, I don't think it was none of us made him cover it up. It might have been, uh, her office made him cover it up.
Somebody made him cover it up. And about a year and a half later, he digs it out. I got, I got writing on the back of them that tells you what it is. My daughter took them pictures that day.
Is it, is it, uh, the, is this interfering? I mean, what's, what's this doing? Explain to us what this is. Is this hurting you some kind of way? Is this hurting you some kind of way, or is it on your, joining your land or something? Give us.
It goes in a dirt road and goes across on other people's land. It's not me personally, but I know what he does. He went up there, when that Canadian come here, he dug up, and they made him stop. John Brantley gets a hold of the land after the Canadians gone, he goes on down to the bank, South Branch.
Yeah, it's causing some.
And now he's on the curve.
Didn't the state come in there and digs on them ditches out or something right down there? Didn't the state do something right down that, is that Bush Road that next?
Yeah, I called, talked to him, Mr. Avery with the state. I told him I see fishing flood out of man.
If y'all don't see a way to make him understand, he's not a part of the law. Nobody else can do that.
Well, has.
And they were supposed to come back and try to talk to Felix Roy and damn Grimsley about ditching on out to the creek, you know. Well, it failed. There wasn't no further.
Yeah.
And so all that except water that the state, like I say, state dug out that.
Well, they dug all that so that water gets across ninety-one right down that bush road. And that's where it goes across that ninety-one right there.
And I say it's causing some really big issues for Mr. Bobby and Miss Sue Roberts down there, you know, causing. That ditch we dug on out by the private landowner from there, the state started, and it just dumps. Through that woods, and it's, it's a big issue.
Right. And then goes, it goes right behind Bobby and Sue's, and then goes right on Felix Roy over there? And it goes in the creek, I guess.
Yeah, I see all that's been filled in, especially since the storm, all that ditch has been filled in.
Mm-hmm. So we just need to talk to the state about maybe.
Yeah, I talked to them about it, and they said they were gonna come look at it, see what they could do. You know, they asked who the landowner was and owned the land stuff.
So we just need to push out a little bit?
They, they didn't ever let go no further with it.
Yeah, so we might just need to push out a little bit harder.
And so it, it really caused a Mr. Bobby, Mr. Bobby and Miss Sue.
You can actually see.
Well, let, let me ask you this. The, the, the landowners that Allen's talking about, that it's affecting down yonder, that it is going through some of the, and it looks like to me now, some of them folks. Well, he said Bobby and Sue Roberts.
Who?
Bobby and Sue Roberts down there.
Where at?
On Grimsley, on Grimsley Road.
Somebody.
That's further on down.
Yeah, it's further down.
What Royale is talking about is actually at least where he's talking about it, that's further on, that's on, um, that's on Grimsley Road, when it gets to the road, they pipes there. It went across ninety-one highway. I got pictures of it. When it flooded, come big rain.
Right.
It went across ninety-one highway.
Well, look here, look, I mean, for us to try to do something or get a hold of somebody, if, if it's hurting you down yonder, we can, we can do something. If, if it's, it's them other people, the other landowners is the one, they, some of them need to come up here. We, we, you need to get some of them to come up here and explain what it's gonna do.
Well.
I mean, it ain't that we ain't wanting to do nothing, but.
Eating the bed seems like what's happening to me.
Well, if, if we gonna contact the NRCS folks, I mean, I, I need some of them other property owner to come up here with you and complain.
But Bobby and Sue, now both of them are very disabled, you're not gonna be able to.
Well, they need, they need to, they need to write a, write a letter.
Mr. Murray don't even know who he is half the time. He owns the property, that ditch was dug.
Right.
But how could they make him close it up? I don't know how many years ago.
We'll, we'll look into it, but what I'm getting at, for us, if there's something can be done, we, we got to have some of the folks, just the property owners down there, that it's gonna affect. I got to have a letter or something from them saying that, look here, we, we complaining too. And I need, I need more than just you. Because if it, if it ain't, if it ain't joining, well, what I'm saying is, if it ain't affecting you or your property, or gonna flood your property or your house.
Go down the dirt road when it rains.
Well, I understand that.
Well, okay.
But I mean, we, for, for us to do something and, and, and maybe do you some good, really need somebody else to come up here also. I mean, I, I appreciate what you're doing there, but some of them other property owners, if they ain't, they able to come up here, get them to write a letter and sign the letter and get it in, get it in the county manager's hands.
Steve, I, I'll talk to Bobby and Sue.
I can't hear you.
I'll talk to Bobby and Sue Roberts and see about it.
Okay. Ah, well, I appreciate y'all listening to me.
If we can do something, we'll, we'll, we'll go, we gonna look into it. Can you leave them pictures with us?
Can we have the pictures?
I got some more, y'all, keep them.
Yeah.
Thank you.
If we can keep them, we'll see about it. Thank you now. All right, the old business commissioner's office move. Y'all got some information in there, you got pages on. Any questions on that? All right.
Where we staying with that thing, Grigsby Sheen?
She didn't let us know nothing. Ain't heard a word out of her.
What do, what are you talking, referring to?
I mean, she ain't responded to, to, I'm, I'm, I'm moving, I'm going, I'm gonna be out by this date or anything, not a word.
Well, was it ever voted on to put her out?
We own the building, and we, the whole thing, the plan was understood up here before. We, there wasn't no vote to put her out.
Well. I spoke to Doug, and the motion that I made was for us to go down there and occupy those offices that we had after the hurricane. Doug informed me that the emotion was supposedly, was intended, motion was to.
It informed, the motion informed her that we were moving down there to that building.
Well, why can't we share it?
That, that ain't gonna work, Allen. That just ain't gonna work.
Well, Craig, I'm gonna respectfully ask that you step aside on this situation, because it's clearly a conflict of interest.
Why is it a conflict of interest?
Because that's your sister-in-law.
Far as I know, him and her ain't married, and that ain't my sister-in-law.
But, uh, I, I just don't think that you can make an unbiased opinion on this situation with personal feelings.
Did I make a motion on anything? All I did was present it. That's it.
But like I say, I just think you ought to step aside on this thing. That's my personal opinion.
I, I ain't in the middle of it. I'm, I'm telling you where we at with the thing. We gonna move down there, and you was all agreeable to it.
Yes. Moving down there and occupying those offices we had before.
Well, she ain't contacted, it's strange that she ain't contacted none of us, but she contacted you.
Yeah, she called me and asked me why I made a motion, 'cause she was told that I made a motion to have her evicted.
Allen County owns that building. The lease thing is fixing to be up and out. We can do what we want to with it.
Well, what about the people that she serves and helps throughout this county? Because they, they help a lot of people, Craig, who cannot afford the medication and.
Allen, you've heard. Allen, you've heard everything that's been talked about in here, and there's information that needs to be transparent to us to justify what we doing down there. We ain't received none of that, nothing, no contact from Perry, to set up a meeting to go over stuff with him, not anything.
Well, I don't think whatever she, I think whatever she presents, it's never gonna be good enough.
Have you reviewed any of it?
No, I seen what she has turned in.
Allen, you could generate that on a computer or anything else, there's nothing to back up any of those numbers whatsoever, not nothing.
You know, I'm just looking at what the good comes out of this thing, for the county and for the people that's.
We don't, the patient list, we don't know if these people are still on that list, some of them passed away, if they've got well, they're not getting any medication. Uh, we don't know anything about any of this, anything.
Well, for the record, I won't put in the record, I'm not for throwing her out now.
We didn't throw her out, we give her sixty days, actually more than that, she's been asking questions about this thing, she talked to Doug back in summertime, was this a rumor, or what were we gonna do, what were our plans? And he couldn't tell her anything at the time, and you been in to know about all of it, it's just, and, and now you, you backpedaling us.
No, I'm not backpedaling, I, I have discussed, I have expressed my opinion.
If there was any question to be a- answered, you should have asked them back then.
We discussed a bunch of this, Craig, after they called, meeting over and we adjourned, we discussed it over in the commissioner's office that day.
What, what questions was unanswered?
About why she's being removed from it and stuff. I just challenge everybody to stop and look at what good is coming out of this situation.
Allen, there's offices all over this coun- this, this whole county down there, there's offices down yonder at that schoolhouse, that, matter of fact, there was some p- programs they had going on down yonder. Me and Doug, and I believe Fay was in on the meeting too, talked to Lee Robozzi about the thing, she's got an office down at that old schoolhouse down there.
What about this five thousand dollars we owe them down there, we gonna pay you?
Five thousand dollars for what?
We give them ten thousand dollars a year.
Who?
Down there to the, down there to the Spring Creek Health, so we give ten thousand dollars a year.
It's more than that, I'm tell, I, the, the money is on hold till they.
It's twenty-six and a half, I think.
Well, don't we still owe them some money there?
There ain't no contract, Allen, there ain't been no contract, you signed the last contract down there, there ain't even been a contract presented to us for signature since you signed that last one. And it ain't, it ain't, it ain't been brought to that office up there.
They receive money up till now, but, you know, y'all do whatever you want to do.
Allen, there needs to be some transparency, and when we hand out money like that, they, there's either an audit in everything we do, or something to that effect. They're audit exempt, that whole thing right there, she's got to come forth with something to back up those numbers, the people she served, where the money's got coming from, the grants. Well, how this thing is split up, the salaries, how it's broken down, we ain't got nothing to back none of this up. And that right there is only, that ain't number, you need to justify where this money's going, the board does.
Okay, we give seventy-five thousand dollars to you.
Allen, that ain't, that, that is taxpayer money from the state, that was COVID money.
We put sixty thousand dollars off towards out there, and you're gonna quiver over to five thousand dollars from.
It ain't five thousand dollars, Allen.
Yes, it's five thousand dollars, it hasn't been mentioned, yes.
Where's five thousand dollars come from?
I don't know, cause we, we pay them like close to twenty-seven thousand a year.
Twenty-six five.
Twenty-six five, so I don't, I don't know where five's coming from.
Well, how much have we paid them so far?
Ain't paid them nothing. There ain't no contract, there ain't no nothing. Was any more discussion on this?
No.
Anything else about the move that we need to go over? Alright, fueling station update, there what you got with that?
Today we finished the full, uh, complete installation, printer, everything worked, we actually ready to pump fuel out. Um, we are now into beta testing, um, so it's gonna be basically a trial run, they're gonna have to come in, they, we, we've got the tank monitoring system, I can actually monitor it on my phone. Um, so that's, that's installed, that's working, the lights are installed, working. Um, I'm getting the gen, the, the price for the wire for the generator, that's the last stage, but, but we can open up that fueling station. Probably once the beta for probably about a week or so, then we'll, we'll go ahead and open it up to the. I figure maybe county, the county department heads will let them try it out, and then slowly move it into all the other departments, just to make sure we don't overload. What I wanted, I didn't have this on there, but I was talking to Fay about that, we do need to see about, uh, going in, putting some more fuel in that tank. It's, uh, it's sitting at right now, I think thirty-three percent on each, each tank, and if we're gonna go ahead and launch it, it, it probably is not a bad idea to go ahead and try to get some more fuel. I told them.
How many, how, how, was that one load of fuel, or was that more than that that we put in them tanks?
Uh, it was actually one, so, so in, in the regular, we have thirty-six, uh, three thousand six hundred fifty-eight gallons in regular, which is thirty-three percent of the tank. Uh, in off-road diesel, we have, uh, three thousand one hundred forty-four, and that's twenty-eight percent, and then on-road diesel, we have three thousand eighty-three gallons, which is twenty-eight percent.
I don't have anything to charge this back against, cause nobody's been, you know, when everybody starts getting fuel, then I'll take it out of their fuel budget, we'll write a check out of general fund, and it'll go into the, back into the fuel. But right now, this won't, there's no way I can take this out of anybody's budget, cause nobody's used it yet, so if we fill it up, this kinda have to just be on the county.
Well, gas has went up since we.
Uh, it's actually back down now to two dollars and fifty-six cent a gallon, that's what we bought that first batch with, so we're right at that same thing. Me and Andy talking, and I think like, he'll burn through this off-road in no time, Jenny, so that's what concerns me is, is, is that side of it. It's trying to get, I mean, I ain't saying fill it completely up, but maybe get another load.
Just let me know what payment it is.
Yeah. Which I put it not quite three quarters, but, but that's, that's good enough to, to get started, cause I mean, we're gonna have to buy another load, whether we open it up or not.
Then once, once we start, everybody starts getting it, then it's easier to keep track of it, but.
Alright, how much have y'all, when, he's got the printer going?
Printer, yes.
Alright, what's that, is that gonna print the department, the gallons?
It won't print the department, what happens is like, say if, if Andy goes up there, he'll, he'll swap his badge card, he'll, he'll hit it, it tells the, uh, the computer, hey, road department's getting this on this vehicle. He'll enter his four different pins, his pin numbers, and that'll say, okay, well, Andy got it on, say, motor grader one.
Is it gonna show that on the receipt?
No, not on the receipt, it's gonna show it on her, her, her.
What's the receipt gonna show?
The receipt shows the gallons and the price.
The receipt also shows, it will show the four-digit user pin that it's put in, as well as the card that was applied, so that's what everybody wants to know, who got it, you know?
So, we'll be able to trace that back from the receipt as well. And, and, and to answer your question, we're, we're working with, uh, uh, Fuel Master, and they're out of Tallahassee, but they, it may be where we can program it to put the, the department name on there.
Or at least department number.
Yeah, I mean, we can check on that.
Yeah, that, that'll be something like Fuel Master.
Do you have any little pipes covered up, anything around?
Uh, the, the state fire marshal said no, but, but he did tell us, and I've talked to Brad about that, to paint yellow all the way around it, and put that like, uh, sort of that stock grip, but it's got the, the lines in it, the black lines, and it says caution, that's what we gotta do next. But I asked him about that, he said he'd rather not have that, just, just paint it and, and do that, and then we got the signs, the other signs, I got that quote down there with, um, the sign company, Bammers, to see what it's gonna cost for those.
Like, it'll trespass and all that stuff.
So, those signs fine.
My concern is somebody going over and messing around, it's supposed to be, they get tangled up in their pipe, that's why it'll get hurt, then you got a lawsuit.
And maybe we could come in with like a little chain, you know, a little chain or something like that, but he was over there.
He needs something over there, they just can't walk in on top of it.
May have to finish up those, it's gonna take two sides to finish the fence, ain't it?
Yeah, it'd be that front side on the industrial boulevard, and then, uh, what's that, Dozier, Comroff Dozier. Two sides to finish the fence, if we went ahead and fenced it.
Alright.
Yeah, it's, it's they'll stay down the highway and down our road going in.
I'm sure that's gonna be kinda pricey, so I mean, we can.
We can see about that later on.
Yeah, more folk turn around down there and get stuck?
No, and, and, not, I know of, man, they had even more problems than that.
Alright, we need to agree whether or not to get the fuel.
And then I just wanted to ask you, so if we do need to come up with a plan, because we got to start buying fuel, and it may be in between when we meet, so we need to have authority to, to, to go with the lowest price, what we need to set it at.
You need to give, alright, need a motion to give Doug the authority to negotiate the price on the fuel and order the fuel.
I'll make it.
The second?
My second.
All in favor? Alright, the other thing is, uh, are we agreeable to go on and buy the fuel today or tomorrow?
Yes.
Alright.
Where do y'all want that thing from? Can't really pay that at general fund, cause can't really charge it back to anybody, um, we got T-spots, and we don't have any cushion in the fueling station fund.
What about some of the oil?
I guess we won't, I don't know.
We'll figure that out.
You want me to do it?
Yeah.
Well, now, if you take it out of the splash. Whenever you start getting paid for the fuel, is it gonna go back into that splash fund, or they going back into the general fund?
This tank is, there's no way to, to charge this, um, once they start using, using it, then I'm supposed to take it out of the general fund and put it into the.
It's just like, it's just like you're paying Sharber, you, you take it out of that department, and then just credit it back into that fuel account.
So, what do we pay for, what do, what, what do we normally pay for gas at, general fund?
General fund, but we have a bill from Sharber to pay for it. It comes out of each, they break it out into each.
Why, why do you say we can't pay it out of the general fund, cause?
Well, we can.
Why can't we just, when they pay us, we can't just, you can't just?
I don't have, nobody's, nobody's got gas yet, so I don't, I can't break it up.
I'm talking about when they start doing it though, I mean, it's just, it's kinda like a loan, kinda, ain't it?
Just kinda credit it back, right?
Yeah.
I still gotta have someone to charge it, given in general fund, it's gotta go somewhere.
Talking about like, you talking about to key it somewhere, what is?
It's gotta go to the account, it's gotta go to the object.
Yeah, so when you, when you key it somewhere, it's got, yeah.
I can't just put general fund.
We're fine on fuel right now, I just wanna check prices, he's gonna give me a quote in Marvett, but I mean, if we can get with Fuel Master, and, and see if they can't go ahead and set that side of it up, and give her somewhere to charge it to, then we may can do it that way.
Yeah, yeah, can they do that, I mean, would that help you?
Like to charge it back to the department, like say if, if we do.
But there's nothing to charge back to them, yeah.
Why couldn't you just do some forward payment, I mean, you know he's gonna use it.
Yeah, if we add a forward part, it's what they average it in, and then we just go ahead and charge it to their account.
I'm about to ask Perry about that.
Well, I'm saying, I mean, he knows what he uses a month, yeah.
Red fuel, the road department's the only one that'll use red fuel.
But I mean, he knows how much he gonna use a month though, I mean, he gotta, you gotta.
We kinda have to ask Perry about that, that's kinda getting a little.
Well, I mean, but you gotta do something, I mean, all this is for naught.
And it'll be fine, once, once anybody does, once everybody uses it, and then we have to fill up again, I can charge it.
You see what I'm saying, I mean, you know, just take one month out of everybody's, I mean, you know.
Prorated.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just concerned about taking it out of splash, and then you, you know.
Yeah, I mean, if it's going, if it's usually gonna go out of general fund, I'd rather not, I'd rather not take it out of.
Splash back, once you take it out, you can't credit, you can't put it back in.
Yeah, but you can, general fund, you can.
Yeah, you can put it in, in general fund, um, yeah, we, we can do that, you just, you know, we do, like, take an average of what people normally use and charge them, but then you gonna have some department heads, probably one in particular, on the bus, cause he's gonna say we haven't gotten any fuel. And they're steady getting fuel from Sharber, so they're getting billed from Sharber, so isn't it gonna double hit them?
Well, if you tell, if you tell them he done prepaid it.
Then you give them a credit back that month.
Yeah, he just done prepaid it.
Five thousand dollars or whatever it is, just a credit.
So, then when he goes up there, when he starts using his card, it just, yeah.
We can try, they'll get double hit one month, though, and then it'll.
As long as it comes out for, at the end of the year, the budget year.
I understand that, but. I get questions.
Alright, yep, y'all saw it through that right there, we just.
So, you need a motion to buy some fuel, do we need a motion to buy fuel, no?
I don't think we need a motion, I mean, we can make, it ain't gonna hurt nothing to make the motion to do it, but if you'll make the motion.
Oh, I mean, we don't need to, I mean, I didn't know.
But I think we just need to be agreeable, that's what.
Yeah.
What's gonna, gonna, gonna take place. Alright, the road department planning. Andy, this ain't really, this ain't what we wanted, I mean, this, this is just an overview of kinda what y'all already doing. We were looking for a schedule of how you gonna rotate it around, if you could rotate it around and, and work five days a week, and rotate all the employees around.
I think what you're saying, if it, like, if it rained yesterday, or today, tomorrow, and Wednesday, could, instead of being all Friday, y'all work Friday, instead of, like, you know, watch, I guess, watch the weather. You know, you see what I'm saying, I know that puts a little bit on you, but.
You've already got one road straight off like that walk, he gone.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, and you got somebody to sit and walk down there, because.
I, I understand what you said then, I kinda didn't understand it so much.
You see what I'm saying, yeah.
But right now, we can bring in, say, Monday.
You ain't gotta do it, I mean, you ain't gotta do it all the time neither, I mean, it's just kind of a.
Yeah, it's just, you know, you don't never know when you gonna work, when you ain't gonna work, and you have a lot of guys that they're not gonna do it.
Yeah.
I mean, if you wanted to do that.
Well, I mean, they'd be off on Monday though, I mean.
Yeah, but they still, they.
They won't be off on Friday?
Know when they gonna work, you know, and, um, but if you wanna do that, you can split them up and do it, right now, we bring in four, four people on Monday, and three on Friday, cause that's all you gonna have, we hit, hit the seven months.
I mean, what's the, what, I mean.
What happened to, what happened to the other motor grader truck?
The guy's gonna leave.
Why is he gonna leave?
That, here, all, all road departments work four days a week, it's not just ours, it's everybody, and these guys has worked it for twenty years.
Well, we ain't talking about them working five days a week now, we talking about working four days a week.
They're working four days a week.
They don't wanna be where if it rains on Monday, they gonna be changed up, work on Friday, cause a lot of these guys work for us, they have something else to help supplement their salary.
Cause they do on Friday and Thursday.
And it's, it's a sad thing for them that when Friday comes, they got something else that helping them make more money, cause some of these guys don't make the forty dollars more than unemployed. And they bring on a small amount of money, they got to have something else that supplements their salary. We got some that, they cut dog hair, we got some that mows grass, got some that does mechanic and work, they, you know, they're trying to supplement working for us, because of what they make. If you change that, they're gonna change, you know?
If, un- unless they got a cutting dog hair and, and cutting grass, unless it's raining out there, that, that's something they could rearrange anyway, and if they got something, but what we're getting at, they've been, it's, it's a constant complaint thing now. That these machines are setting still on Friday, and the sun's shining, and they needed to been running.
Why don't we just go back to five days a week?
Well, you're trying to get away from that, okay, you said.
I understand that, but the way we work, we, guys, he, they, these guys wanna know where Monday through Friday, or I want to work, they want, uh, they wanna know when, when they gonna work. And it's not me saying it is, is, is the way these guys work, and, you know, you gotta look at, we shorthanded, we try to recruit people.
Yeah.
This guy worked for us before, and talking about the guy leaving, this guy worked for us before, the board come up, said, hey, y'all scraping roads too much, y'all ditching too much, we don't need but three motor graders, this guy was driving a motor grader for us.
It, it, it wasn't scraping and ditching too much, it was that the machine, there was no more getting done with three machines than there was before, I mean, it's, it's, it's the same amount, and, and.
I, I'll try to do it any way y'all wanna do it, I just don't know how much, if you send the guy home today and say, hey, you got to go home, you got to come in Friday, and what you gonna do when he calls in Friday and says, hey, I don't feel good, I'm gonna use my PTO time for the day I was out, your machine's gonna sit still here.
He ain't gonna sit still all year though.
No.
But he gonna run out of time eventually.
I understand where y'all coming from, but these guys.
We trying to help you, we trying to make you more efficient too though, I mean, we trying to help you out some too.
But these guys already give up a week to be on call, you know, and they're not, they're not getting, they're not getting, say, one piece.
Once he brought, got brought up at the meeting, you know, I didn't even say anything about it till we come after Christmas, and when I come back after Christmas, I had guys come in, and they was voicing their opinion, I said, you know, this is your job, I can't do anything with it, it's your job.
Yeah.
You know, and, and they kinda voiced their opinion, that these guys have worked forty hours a week, they know I come to work on Monday, I get off on Friday, and unless I'm on call, I don't have to worry. They don't, I come from farming, I know how we did on the farm, but this is kind of a different ballgame with the guys that work for us, they're not any of them farmers, and they don't wanna work that way. Now, they might stay and work, and we may do it any way you wanna do it, but, and I will do it any way y'all try to help, and I'll try to help you figure out a way to do it, but when it rains. and I'll try to help you figure out a way to do it, but when it rains, we do have a lot of work to do when it rains. We work, Sunday it rained a big monshire rain, Monday morning, we was wide open, it took every one of us that was there to do what we had to do, and Tuesday we started back scraping, and we scraped, but then it rained again last night. I mean, rain can come and go, you know, I mean, it's, it's a hard thing to work a rain.
Right.
When you got other work to do too.
Yeah.
I mean, today we did a lot of work in the shop, you know, I mean, we, we do work on all our equipment too. I mean, we don't hire done, everything that's broke, we work on it. But I, I, I don't know any, I don't know any easy answers.
You see where we coming from, I mean, I, we, we, I think we all know there's not an easy answer, but you see where we coming from.
I see where you're coming from. My thing was, was if we rain, if it rains, you know, we, we can work in the shop, then at the end of the week, say, hey, you know, we, it's sun shining, we need to run, offer some of them some extra overtime and let them work and make some extra money. That's what they trying to do anyway, you know? I mean, that was where I was kinda with, and that was kind of a in-between, between what y'all wanted and the in-between what these guys are used to working. But like I said, I, I, I'll try to do it any way y'all wanna do it, I just think that we got, we got neighboring road department right now, and, and it's right side of, they offering seventeen dollars an hour to drive a motor grader.
Andy, I tried to tell y'all that a long time ago, and I couldn't get the rest of the board to do that. There needs to be a wider spread between what the motor grader drivers are getting and what these other folks that just not specialized in driving a piece of equipment like that all the time. There need to be a wider spread in that, and I couldn't get it done, I told them that, that's been ten years ago.
I'm just saying, right now, there's just a lot of competition for anybody that would come to work at the road department. You got another one that's neighboring us, they, they raised, they raised their starting salary, they raised the pay that the guys is getting now, they give them a big bonus, they changed their retirement plan to a retirement plan. That's what I'm in challenge with, to try to get somebody that actually knows what we do to come work for us. And we're three men short right now, there's only seven of us. And we training the guy, you know, to try to take the guy's places leaving us, um, but I mean, we're just shorthanded and we, we put it out there, you know?
This is something that needs to happen, when they go to work at seven o'clock down yonder, they don't need to go by the store and do this and do that, and another thing is, they need, you need to find, we done talked about this before too, you need to find somewhere to park these motor graders like they used to do. Y'all got enough of vehicles down there to go out there and service them things out there and park them around somebody's farm site? There's two or three of them that I know of, said they used to do it a long time ago and wanna know why they quit doing it. You, you killing two hours in and out, back and forth like that right there, already on the machines going out. And they coming in, some of them coming in forty-five minutes before it's knocking off time.
Sometimes, Craig, they come in and they blow them, we have to blow their machines out very quick.
They ain't blow, they, that, not the one driving a pickup truck ain't coming in blowing no machine out, he's driving a truck.
He, he's knocked out. I'll try to help y'all do it any way you wanna do it, I just don't know no easy answer to be... I mean, I just don't, I don't know what the answer is to try to make any, everybody happy, you know, I just don't know what it is.
Well, bottom line is, probably will never make everybody happy with it, but I mean, why don't, why don't you come and sit with us and maybe we can all come to s- like, to some kind of solution together with it, and, and, and let's just put, I mean, all of our heads together is better than just one, you know? And maybe we can try to come to some kind of solution with that.
Yeah, we kinda talked to Doug about that first week, when the guys actually, when we come back after Christmas, there was some of them coming there and asked me about it, and I said, yeah, it did come up at the meeting, and we kinda talked to Doug about, you know, it's not my job, it's their, it's their job, and they was voicing their opinion to me, and I told them, I said, hey, you know, it's, it's not my decision, if it was my decision, it'd be different. It's not my decision, it's on somebody else to, that's making that decision, and I, I see where y'all is to run, and there's a lot of days when it gets dry, like when y'all was picking peanuts. That's where I would concentrate on trying to get them to run every minute, because we fixed a, a lot of places when it was dry. When it's raining, basically, all we're gonna get to do is scrape roads, I mean, if we can scrape, because your dirt pile squirts, you're knocking a whole lot of dirt, but when you have four or five weeks that it gets really good and dry, I'd like to see them run seven days a week to get some of the places we having problems with.
Right.
I, I see where y'all coming from, but, you know, I'm hearing where these other guys come from, and they can go somewhere else and work, eh, very easily and not, just, they know what time they coming to work, they know what time they're going home. But I do think if we offer some of them, from, you know, like, it rains this week, we still work, but we offer them, hey, here's your little overtime, come in and run for us, I think they'd be, some of them, that would, they'd be more than glad to come, because, I mean, they gonna blade roads, it's not like they're gonna be out there just digging ditches or anything.
Yeah.
And, you know, right now, we run pretty shorthanded, so far as affecting budget. You know, I think we could do that by budget, but...
I think y'all do a real good job, what y'all do down there with the amount of people y'all got. I don't see how in the world you could cover a whole county and do the work that they do with six or seven, eight, ten.
We had times right now, because, I mean, like I said, we didn't have, it's been a big settlement. And it's pretty challenging to stay on top of, I mean, just like, we, you know, when it rains, Monday when we had that big rain, we had a bunch washed out, sister feds, we had trees down, I mean, it took every one of us all day long with, with all of us there to try to make things where it would go Monday after a big rain. I know it was wet, it couldn't scrape roads, but we still had a bunch of stuff to be out there, we had trees down, we had broken limbs. I mean, with several people to accomplish all that, and, you know, you split up, when it's raining, you split up, there's gonna be days when you're not gonna accomplish that, I mean, I, I don't know any easy answer to... I see where you coming from, and yes, when it's dry, I do see running, I'd love to run ditch, we need to be ditching roads, I mean, really, I, when it's dry, I'd like to see them run off, but, so, no, I'll do anything y'all want to, I, I just don't know. I can only speak for myself, I can't speak for the guys, I just know how they voice their opinions about it, you know, they, they built their life around working four days a week. And now, I've never had a problem like we had a storm, and I said, hey, we got a storm on Thursday, we know Friday morning, we all got to show up, and we got to get roads safe. Once I told them guys, I've never had a problem with one of them showing up, they've always been there, and we worked till we get them back safe and move on. Nobody's ever asked us to run any X. It was always...
Well, this ain't gonna be an every week thing either, you know?
No, I understand, and that's why I'm saying, if it's not gonna be every week,
Yeah.
let's try to give them a little overtime to do it, give them some incentive.
It ain't gonna be every, 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 every week, it's gonna be overtime.
Kinda go with you, you know what I'm saying, I mean, I don't wanna fight y'all, and I don't wanna fight them, you know, I, I wanna see us all. We got a pretty good little group, and it's been kinda come and go with them, and, you know, we already showed three guys, and there's not, there not been anybody beating down the door. That's one reason some of the counties that offering such big salaries to run their machines, because they're sitting still.
And you'll take, when they get ready to move the excavator, they got to find a CDL driver from the city to go run the...
What happened to the man that y'all talked to with the CDL, the fellow from last month?
Uh, we, we, we contacted him, talked to him, and he said that, um, you know, that he was, he was gonna leave where he was at, and he was just looking for something part-time, and we told him, you know, come get an application, fill it out, and you know that... But, now, he didn't wanna be a dump truck driver, now, but we didn't deter him, we told him, come get an application, fill it out, we'd see what we could do. And we hadn't heard from him or seen him fill it. But, um, he did kinda say that all he wanted to do was drive a motor grader part-time, he didn't wanna work all week, didn't wanna drive a truck, he just pretty much wanted to come in, get in the motor grader, drive it, like, three days a week, go on. But he didn't come get an application either.
Yeah. Well, I'm gonna follow back up with him, because I was the one that...
Doug, I think, you know, advertised something the other day for us, some, some things, you know, trying to get some help, but we got a lot of competition out there with people that can do what we do. Right now, there's just two of us that can run a excavator in the back.
We're gonna do some more planning on this thing right here, but the next thing is the cover pipe cost. He's showing on him that the, the plastic pipe, and Doug's gonna try to get the specs on the pipe. Don't, nobody seem to know if it's as strong as the steel pipe or, or, I mean, nobody, did you ever find out anything?
I, I talked to the manufacturer, and, and of course, they didn't give me anything, they just said it's this American Association of State Highway and Tra- uh, Transportation Officials certified, and it's like neon two ninety-four. Um, she said that she would try to send me something, me and Andy had talked about it, and, um, he told me that, that was the local guys, they wouldn't give a, a, a weight rating either. So it sounds like nobody wants to give a weight rating that way, they won't be responsible if you crush it, if you crush it, that's what it sounds like to me.
That's kinda what we, we didn't, I think they told us, it's really not meant for the road, it's meant to be put under parking lots and a lot of dirt on it, and that's all they would give us.
Manufacturer basically telling me that same thing, it's...
Dawsonville's got some of it on the yard over yonder. You need to check with them and see if they're buying that stuff on a regular basis, and if it's holding up, or, or they just tried it.
All these prices are plastic, all these prices we got are plastic?
No, there's one plastic and, um...
Which one's the metal? Which one's the galvanized?
Uh, that wind, wind tech or something like that, I think's plastic.
Wind supply, that's the plastic.
I think that's...
And the covert pipe from Consolidated Gulf is consolidated in Gulf, or that's metal pipe?
That, that's metal pipe, yeah. And right now, nobody is building anything but twenty foot section. So anything you get, you go out and band it together, and basically gonna put a weak spot right into...
So all this thirty foot stuff that we got ain't, that ain't accurate?
They, they quote us like thirty, it's just, you know, like, you want thirty feet, they'll tell you it's so much foot, and they say thirty foot. Now, Gulf Atlantic might accidentally build us some thirty foot pipes, but right now, anything they got on the yard is twenty foot. And you got, and that's everybody.
And this is, well, if you buy a truckload, I know they, surely they give you a discount if you buy a truckload.
That is our discount.
That's a truckload discount?
That, that's pretty much what, eh, you know, and we, we buy one of our truckloads, they already give us a government discount. And Gulf Atlantic's pretty much, we found out it when Craig wanted to price it, we kinda found out that Gulf Atlantic has bought up pretty much everybody around us, and they distributed it out like Caterpillar does or whatever, so Baker County and Early County's going above us, and Seminole, Decatur, and us is going to Tallahassee. The only thing about plastic pipe to me is if you get any kind of damage in it in the road, I don't know how to fix that once it's got a cut in it or something, it's gonna make it weak. Metal pipe, I've got a small metal pipe, which I know Layden sees up at some of those right down the road, from where he goes. We've got that pipe by, by years, by working on it when we have a problem, we add a little to it, or we put a, put a patch on it or whatever. I don't know exactly how good, you know, we'd do on plastic pipe, but y'all wanna try some? We will, I do know Early County just bought their first pipe, they're gonna start using it on some driveways. They said they wasn't gonna just start putting it in the road, but they were gonna start, you know, when they had to go do a driveway, and they knew just a car was going across, they were gonna start putting in some plastic pipe across drive. But I do have several roads that they do, need to put some in, um, little bit, a little bit in everybody's district, basically, once, about one spot in everybody's district. That's, we got a problem that we need to fix.
What you got on the yard down there now?
What was that, Craig?
What you got on the yard down there now?
I got one piece, one twenty-four by thirty, and I got a little short piece that when we have to, if we have to add a little, we cut off of it, and I got one, one thirty-six by thirty. And I got two that belongs to the school, but they belong to the school, they bought them to go at the football field, we got two. Sitting on the yard for them, but they're, they're, they belong to the school.
How many pieces of pipe you need right now?
I need need one on Henry Miller, two on Hornsby Cemetery, two on McClendon, and one on Griffin, one thirty-six by thirty on Griffin Shuffel. So that's thirty foot pipe, but if we have to buy it twenty foot lengths, we have to adjust, you know, it'll be three pipes for one, because we have to cut it tight. But we got some pretty bad places on them roads right there, I know Layden sees that on McClendon. It gets washed out so bad now that sometimes you can't hardly go through it. And we got a place that they redid a ditch on Hornsby Cemetery, and when they redid the ditch, now it's, it's overrun and everything there. And we got that one that collapsed in the other district on Henry Miller, and we've been to work on a place on Griffin Sherfield. You just can't even go that road, we need a crossover pipe to drain it. We gonna have to build that road up three or four foot for a long section and get the water to cross over and try to drain.
So you need six thirty foot pipe, but you can't get the thirty foot right now, so you need nine twenty foot.
I need...
You need a truckload.
Three five twenty-four by thirties and one thirty-six by thirty. The cover that.
And then you, and then you won't have none on the yard still?
Well, I still have the two I got on the yard that I try to keep, because you don't never know what might happen one night, that you may have to dig something up.
Yeah, I definitely keep some spares on the yard.
But these places is getting pretty bad where we can't handle them too, you know? The only one that really hadn't caused too much problems is on Henry Miller, and it, it didn't get enough rain to build up to go across the road up neighbored pond, and, you know, because that pipe's not there, but eventually it will.
Alright, we need a motion to approve him getting the pipe, I'll make it.
Second.
All in favor? Alright, motion secured. Alright, we'll work on this other, some more. Alright, next thing on the old business is the, the FEMA project, there's a correction on that right there.
Yeah, well, we did the budget, we were only expecting sixty thousand, and then somehow there was confusion with, with GMA, and I think Debbie thought we were gonna get a bit more, but we'd already gotten that, so we're still just, it's just the sixty thousand we budgeted, we're not gonna get, what was it, two hundred? Because we've already gotten everything.
So we got the sixty thousand still coming?
Yes.
Alright.
And that, that's what we budgeted for anyway, so...
Well, that's better than nothing.
Yeah, we just wanted to make sure we got that.
Alright. Alright, get to the new business. Uh, last year, we went ahead and approved the TAN's notes, so she could draw them in whenever, not right now, but whenever she needed, without having, in the middle of the year, maybe call a special meeting or something like that right there.
I paid the other one off today.
They'd just be available. Need a motion to approve that.
You have some extra?
We, uh, we took the tax money.
How much was it?
A little over one point five.
So we need a motion to approve the TAN's note?
Yeah, for the future.
For the future, I made the motion.
The second.
I'll second.
All in favor? Alright, motion's cured. Approval of the alcohol license for the Georgia Rural Hospital Food Collaborative, that's Robin Ralph.
Is that the meat market?
That's Pickles' old meat market, there's about four or five different investors that bought into that thing, and, uh, they'll get a bar out there.
This is all premise, this is all premise.
Yeah. Alright, we just need to approve this, as she's cleared the, the background and all that.
Sheriff signed off on this, Chris.
I'll make it.
Second.
All in favor? Alright, the motion's cured. Qualifying fees, you got them, and they're, I guess, the same as it been being as they...
Yeah, Josh, if nothing went up, it's still gonna be three percent of the salary, so, uh, I believe it's seventy-two dollars for a commissioner and ninety dollars for a school board member.
The school board member makes more than us?
What?
I need a raise then.
You on the wrong board?
No, I said they, the school board making more than us, I was, I feel like we working harder than they are.
I'll make the motion to approve the fees.
Second.
All in favor? Alright, the motion's cured. The, uh, holiday schedule, is there any?
Is that just normal, ain't it? Yeah, I don't see no problem with that.
What y'all, is there, is there anything that might be a conflict on any of this, these days with anything?
It's the same as it basically was. It's the same as it basically was. It's just, uh, right there, Christmas being on weekends, that kinda throws it off. So we kinda split it and did the, the two and four and the one, 'cause you know, you give them, you give them three days and we did two and four and one after. We always do the, the twenty-six no matter what.
All right.
That's good, but everything else is the same as it's, it's always been.
I'm making a motion to approve?
Sure. All in favor? All right, motion secured. The, uh, regional commission department. Does anybody wanna do that? Doug? Is it, what it's?
I'm making a motion, Doug, Doug.
I'll do, I mean, whatever, I mean, I don't know if it needs to be a remission.
He can, he can't vote. They were saying it had to be a commission. Like, we could have somebody else represent, but only, uh, uh, layman official could like do it when they had voting stuff. Any of us could go and listen, but he can't.
I'm pretty full of this, I think. We could vote, we could vote Christine, she ain't here.
Why not go over too good? You stick my name on it, I reckon. I can't, I ain't promising I can do anything. I mean, I, I hate it, but I can't be everywhere.
Y'all make a motion for that?
Yeah, I just make, I need a motion on that.
Make a motion, Craig.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor? All right, motion secured. The, uh, hazard mitigation plan, approval letter, GMA. Thirty-one and thirty-three.
That's that, uh, we have, we have to have a hazard mitigation plan, um, to be able to get grant money through, through GMA. And that's, that Debbie completed. So that's just telling you that we got approved for our plan for five years, so we'll be able to plow and get, uh, GMA grants and stuff.
Is there anything? So that's just for information. They'll meet grant approval.
At the time of the, um, when I put this package together, I didn't know the actual numbers. Me and Andy talked and, uh, so they sent us the numbers. So we got, uh, I got it right on my phone. So, so the, um, the formula is we're getting four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-two uh, dollars and sixty-one cents with the thirty percent match. So we're gonna be, uh, we're gonna have to pay at least five hundred and fif- what, five hundred thousand? What is it? Yeah, something like that. Was it more? Andy, you was telling me this morning. Five hundred fifty-five thousand?
We have to spend five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
That won't complete the full road.
Our match is a hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
But, but did, did you say that would not complete the full road?
Not at what?
At that price?
Well, they, they talking a hundred and fifty thousand dollars maybe a mile just to resurface. And then it depends on too. How do we wanna do the road? We, the, the other part of that road, we, we pulled it twice. You know, 'cause of all the potholes, we didn't want them to pop back up. Do we wanna pull this, do the same on the second half as we did on the first half? 'Cause it's a little, you know, that, that's a little more. It, it worked out good and we got a good road, I think, you know, out of it. But it still, you know, it adds to that price a little bit, so. And that's, y'all's decision on how you wanna do it, but when we bid it, we just need to know whether we need to be in a level job or just need to be in a resurfacing job.
I think you go and do it like you did it before.
Yeah.
The intersection of it, and I know Craig knows, that goes down the back of your church is pretty rough right, right there, you know, so.
And what about that section where you had that, uh, sink hole? You go ahead, that's gotta be repaired too?
We do need to look into fixing that dip right there at, um, Luke Cook's house, 'cause it, you know, it caved in on us and it's caved in some more. I seen seeing that. And I, we got it patched, but we didn't do, really do much with it because cotton season, you know, we had a lot of cotton trucks, you know, trying to run, so we, we, we got it by, but before we paved it, we need to get a month ahead of it.
Well, is that a covered up on a collapse or just through itself?
It's just a sink hole. And need to go in there and just cut a section of it out and need somebody with some real good sandy clay and some big packing machines to come in there and, you know, and redo that section of the road or we gonna... I, we gonna have a dip there. I guess for it, I know that dip's been there about half of my lifetime and I know Craig's probably been over it too. And if, if we don't fix it, it's gonna come back.
It's gonna get worse. All right, the... You gonna, this ain't gonna do all the road, what I'm understanding, the money.
They four point three miles of road left. And he, I asked him the other day before the meeting, what did he think that, you know, when we got back to paving? What did he think per mile was gonna be running at that time? And he said, I'm guessing probably a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a mile. And that's about six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars if you just sat down and resurfaced it just like it is. If you do a level job, the, when we did the other part, we did about a hundred and ten more thousand dollars to do.
I was thinking it was seven hundred something thousand last time I wanted to do.
Yeah, it was almost seven hundred something thousand.
Thank you.
I'm figuring if you leveled it, you're gonna get between seven fifty and eight hundred thousand to finish the road. By, by what he told me that he thought things were, but it's just like everything else. They bout, ain't nobody quoting you nothing until you say, I wanna buy it, and they giving you a price on it. 'Cause just like this pipe, they, they telling us today, that's what pri- pi- pri- pipe prices is today. But when you call it over two days later, it may be changed, you know? And paving's gonna be the same way. But I wanna bid it out, you know, get it, get it out there for bid. You know, because things is just getting higher.
Well, you need to go ahead and bid the whole road. Go ahead and get the bid on the whole road.
You wanna do two pulls, Craig, like we did the other?
I think you gonna, you gonna have to do it at least at Bellevue Church anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's got to go to Bellevue Church pulling it, 'cause, I mean, we, I asked him to do that both ways. We'll look at, we'll, he'll come look at it, him and his engine, his, his paving guy. And he'll tell us, hey, right here, we don't need to go no further with this. This'll be all right. We, we'll do it, do... We're trying to do it the cheapest way we can and do a good road, 'cause we got a good road, you know, out there.
All right. Go ahead, go ahead and get somebody to come look at it and let's get some bids in.
Okay, okay, when in the morning, then we'll get, get the work on.
All right. I think that's all we need to talk about, about the road, um...
What about the spot on, Craig, where they tore it up? We need to...
What one you talking about?
Uh, coming out of, uh, uh...
Bush Grimes?
Bush Grimes.
I said that, uh, kinda.
They broke the road up pretty bad and it's gonna keep breaking on in. So, you know, we'll need some hot asphalt. And we got a place on, um, Twilight Church, about two days later, we got a place on Twilight Church, right past John Weaver's house there. They got about this much of that road broke off, you know, in that lane. Ain't much of a road there at Star Wheel, but same thing happened there. We don't fix that spot right there, you know, that's gonna break on off and get on out in the road.
Doug done tried to contact the folks. He sent them a letter. We'll see what they say about it. They failed. Hell, what do you need that right there?
And it, were they swinging out and going off the road or were they coming on to rip?
Coming out of that dirt road, they have to go out in the ditch and when them front tires is pushing, it's just tearing that asphalt off. I went out to Bellevue and, and both places and I put a rock base, you know, like swept off that loose dirt. And we put a rock base kinda there where maybe it would give them some stability and not push mud. But when they coming out, when it's wet and that ditch is wet, it's, it's just eating into the road. They got about that much of Bellevue and it's right at being where it's fixing to break the road off. And, you know, y'all wanna see if we can get a little hot asphalt to fix it, but with them trucks coming in, I don't know if we can fix it now or not.
Need to fix that and I need to go on down there. They missed, they patched four holes and missed ten. Going on out to the end of the Bellevue road down there and it's that part that they widened out, they mud, they water in the holes now, but when it dries up, y'all, they need to fix that.
We'll rerun it. Now, some of them scabs, you know, when it ain't...
Uh, it ain't, it ain't that. They missed dead gum holes that big around out there.
We'll, we'll go back down. We've been picking out some.
All right, uh... While we got you here, they, the USDA grant on the equipment, that's, that's for the road department. They some track bids, but we don't know on this thing. I mean... The woman's coming down here. Ain't that, that woman coming down here third?
Thirteenth closed out the vehicle grant.
We got to go back over and finalize that thing that we did to get the vehicles. We gonna see how much of this, some of that stuff that was a little bit misleading on their grant. Wasn't no total fifty-fifty thing on some of them. And...
I think that's what it was, Craig, was fifty-fifty.
Uh...
I mean, I don't, I don't know. I didn't see it.
It wound up.
No, I mean, I don't know. I didn't see it. I don't know what.
It wound up being a, it wound up being a max total that it could be or something else if I was, I was laughing. I can't remember that far.
It wasn't, it wasn't the fifty-fifty we was led up to believe. It was, I mean, it was a too good a deal to turn down, but it wasn't half price thing. It was a little bit, cost us a little bit more than that. But anyway, we got the track to bids. We gonna see what the woman says. And, uh... I mean, we got a lot of different, two of these bids right here. Uh, the trade-in. I ain't, I mean, this is just put in front of, what is the trade-in?
The three track, the two open cabs and that old.
It's on that first page, Mr. Chris.
It's the same, it's the same track, same track.
Tractor we've been trying to trade in all, all along.
Sixty-six oh three is, those two sixty-six oh threes are sixty-four five. Is that right?
Yeah. They two little open cab tractors and one old tractor is sitting out there just side fence, you know, it's just... That's the first limco tractor we had, you know, we mowed with it. It won't even pull off when we crank it up, you know, right now.
I don't care, don't care.
But Flynn is the cheapest on the, the closest.
All right.
There's a lot of different.
Why'd you price one mower and two mowers?
Uh, the guy just done, like, put a tractor and mower and a tractor and mower together.
I got you.
Uh, we were just pricing.
So you just really need the one mower?
Really need two, but, but, but one.
I knew I shouldn't ask that shit ahead.
One, they more air on it than they are metals, so I mean...
Yeah.
One, one would get us, get us by, but the other one's real old too now.
They wore slam out. They busted all to pieces.
That one mower's about thirteen years old. They, they more weld on it than they are metal left on it and the other ones.
Let's look, we'll look and talk to that lady and we'll see. Maybe we, we'll talk to the lady about the grant, maybe we can swing. Maybe we can swing. You might get one instead of two.
The most problem out of that chassis wears out. And once we go through next month, we'll have both of them in, in there. We'll replace bolts and we'll try to make the check, the moving chassis that picks them up. That's where we have a lot of problems is all that stuff just wears out, you know, and we'll, we, we'll patch up on whatever we have to now, but...
All right.
Whatever y'all want to do is...
We'll see, we'll see what we get, how we work out something with the grant. The Union Church Road damages, that was, we, what's that?
I got a call, saying how, how long ago, Doug, three, four months, week ago?
Yeah, yeah, first December.
Fellow called me and told me he was traveling down Union Church Road and there's a person out there that took a, his own personal excavator and he had dug out the ditch and piled about a five-foot bank dirt right down the middle of the road there, probably forty, fifty feet long. Right in the middle of the road, just dug a ditch out and then just piled all this stuff in the road and they like to hit it head on.
All right, that's, that's what we done talked about before.
He, he's actually taking it and trying to fix a little bit of it, but he's taken, uh, uh, some of the county road. So, so where he widened up the ditch to drain the field, it's still, the ditch is still wide. So he's put the dirt back, but it, it's still some of the county roads that, uh, is.
Gone, yeah.
Still, yeah, it's got stopped, man.
Yeah.
You can't keep dishing water through the roofs. You can't keep digging up ditches just on what you want to, bombing dirt in the roofs. All it's gonna take is one person to hit something like that. There gonna be a lawsuit, it won't wait.
All right, in the ordinance book, is there anything in there at this point in time?
Stuff up there is, I'll just have to look, locate it and see.
Look through that book.
When I started putting stuff online, I didn't see any kind of ordinance book, so I'll, I'll just have to try, I'll just have to try to find it again.
All right. Y'all wanna put some kind of ordinance in place if there's not one already in place?
Yes.
All right, you gonna have to come up, and I ain't, I ain't no lawyer, but you gonna have to come up with something.
When he let Doug have a little leeway and maybe coming up with?
Well, he need to talk to the county attorney, 'cause you, he's got to have something with some teeth. If you don't, you ain't got, you doing nothing.
I could probably search the counties around us, give whatever their example is and then take it to the county attorney and let him put something and then bring it to you guys for approval.
That sounds good to me.
Uh, y'all want to give him authority to do that?
I mean, he ain't, wouldn't you say that he's really digging on his property though? I mean, I, I mean.
It's a fine line right there.
It's a fine line. I mean, I know he piled the dirt in the road and that road's already had a history of where you couldn't even walk down it, where you got it back, where you could drive.
Right, right. Anytime it rains, you can't, you, you don't need to drive down that road. If it rains a half inch, you don't need to travel that road.
Yeah, you walked down there, you'd be slimming over there and you're fine.
Yeah, that's right.
We, we've kinda got that road settled a little bit, but from what it used to be.
If I'm not mistaken, the gentleman did it, I don't know, seven, eight years ago, he did the same thing, I think. So, I mean, he just...
Yeah, that's when the blue clay got in the road.
That's right.
Which we closed it when the dirt was in the road and, and the road's back open now, but, you know, we gotta be careful too.
It's just still dangerous for a lot of people.
If you let someone to do that.
And I agree with that, but then again, whereas I, we got to look at where our right of way is too there, because he's trying to...
He's taking the right of way away, I can tell you that.
He's probably getting, but he's riding it a little bit on the other side, but I don't know if I see his land or not.
Well, I was gonna say, I don't know, there's a lot of questions there.
And he's fixing the dump water on somebody else if he don't own that on the other side of the road too.
Right.
But I think he's still digging on his property.
Well, I mean, that's what I'm saying. Just needs to be some clarification, I think, there what's going on.
Yeah. I'd hate to run out there and just jump off at him with something until we have to.
Right, that's right.
Detail of what's going on.
He was nice about it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, he, yeah, yeah, I mean, he said he'd do whatever to make it right. He just, you know, so, I mean, he, he's pretty easy to deal with.
Dirt in the road and folks trying to travel the road, get it run over, 'cause...
That, I think that's the main problem is, while he's working there, he needs to finish the work to complete the project.
Well, he should've called us and we should've just closed, didn't start with it.
Exactly, exactly. That's all that.
Well, the, if you put the ordinance in place, I think you need to cover all that right there. And if somebody wanted to do some work like that, that, that wouldn't cost us anything. They'd give us notification and then everything'd be okay.
Shut the road and everything'd be fine. That's right, that's right.
Yeah, he's got a lot of.
Give us forty-eight hours or, or something. Give us some kind of, yeah, time.
And they take on the possibility of somebody else do that.
Well, we'll give us forty-eight hours. That gives him time to go out there and shut the road like he needs to have it shut. That way, he ain't gotta do it at four o'clock in the afternoon. That gives him two or three days to, to do it. And then, like you said, then if something happens, it's, it's all over.
It's just, we didn't know it till somebody called it in and it was there during the night, but somebody could've run into it, you know?
All right, we need to, need to make a motion to let Doug inquire into putting the ordinance in place.
I'll make it.
Second on that. All in favor? Be in favor?
Oh, yeah.
Motion secured. All right, the other thing is, we got a use of a personal vehicle for county business. There's, there's an employee, one of these departments is using his own vehicle. And I don't know, you know, the why, why not of that. Need to give Doug permission to look into that, because, I mean, if, if transmission were to go out on the thing or he needs some tires or, or... I mean, I, I don't know. You know, this, this, they, they, I don't know why the man is doing it. I mean, and I, I, I mean, it's with the sheriff's department down there and, and he's hauling an inmate in there. I don't know what the liability is of that.
Do we pay mileage or anything like that?
I don't, I, well, nobody knows.
No.
You don't.
But, uh, they, they need to be some, some answers to that right there. Um, give Doug permission to look into it and see.
So this person just did? So this person just didn't...
Take that back. There, I think he gets a little gas.
Mm-hmm.
But that's it.
That's it.
Because it's been, it's been brought to my attention and I, and I mean, he's, he's pulling a trailer also. And he got the inmate in his own personal vehicle. You know, I, I don't know what the deal would be if he got in a wreck and it ain't a county vehicle. What would be the deal with the inmate and would he be liable for it or personally? Or, we need to look into that.
Well, that's not, that's not fair to him.
Oh, absolutely not.
That's not fair to him.
Yeah, we got those blazes, you got the dents or... You know, I mean, it's not the best in the world, but, you know, I mean, if you need something, let me know.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't think that, the, the, that ain't the problem. It's, it's, he's not permitted to drive for some reason. But anyway, let Doug look into it and, and get back with us on that right there. Last thing I think we got is putting GPS on these vehicles. Since the thing, the incident with Kenny Kirkland. I mean, it's, they had a time locating the vehicle. And anything like it happened, we had one, the man that had the incident with that motor grader. You know, I mean, he wasn't lost or nothing like that right there, but... I mean, if he didn't come in or something like that and you needed to try to find out where he was at, we, we need to look into that. Most of, a lot of these counties, I think Decatur County's got it on everything they got down here. Under these, these two motor graders, two or three of the motor graders we got have got a provision on there. You just got to get, download the app. John Deere's got the same thing that we have agreed to buy. But unless they, some of these newer vehicles, they got something on there, a provision for that. We, we need to look into doing that in the event we had to.
Something bad happened.
They hurt somebody.
Yeah, and you need to know where it is, yeah. I agree with that.